Years when we look and just put that on the list. And I'll let the building department know, put it on the list tomorrow. Well, I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful.
I'll volunteer to read some.
And we did, I'll forward the nice communication requesting the two resolutions.
You think so?
Thanks, Tim. It's all set.
All set then?
Yeah.
Should have the speech done tomorrow.
Let me know.
It's going to be shorter.
Is it?
Video.
State of the city?
Twenty-third.
Of March? Five o'clock?
What? Five or five thirty?
I don't like, we didn't like the morning stuff. Did nobody want to come up?
I, how, I'd never, how come I haven't heard anything? Or else I don't read my emails from the city.
That, you know, that could be, it just could be, I'm not wondering.
Actually, it was in.
Yeah, we're doing it, we're doing it at Eastern Palace, we're having.
It was the state of the city?
Yeah, state of the city, it's on the twenty-third, it probably was in the packet.
It was in the L L packet.
It was in the L L packet two weeks ago. And we're having barbecue and, you know, we, we're probably gonna have to cut some department heads. So not everyone can come, but we're having.
Why not?
We don't have enough space. Tom had to go, Tom?
It said five, didn't it?
Thanks for volunteering, uh, to stay home.
I'll say five.
Serena already volunteered to stay home, too.
Say five?
Five or five thirty. I'll get it for you. Tomorrow, I'll have.
Oh, yeah. I'm a light weight. I'll just, I'll stay home.
You can't stay home. So this is what I got over the weekend. From her about the.
Oh, well, that, yeah.
Lucky you, you're, you know, some people just can't say no.
Can you? Hello, how are you?
You don't know how to say no, Ed.
What is that?
You don't know how to say no.
Oh, I, we did it last year, but there's, I just thought that you guys would get a kick out of that one.
We always get a kick out of it.
I didn't send it, so it's not floating around.
Well, you'd have to read them half the time. We get a kick out of just her being a pain in your ass.
I'm so glad you enjoy that.
Better you than me.
I say just let Lisa handle her.
What do you think of the sandbar deal? Summer sandbar.
I have one day is what I was thinking. But everybody wants two days. I don't think they have big enough venue to hold two days.
I don't, I think that if they're bringing in the sand and their stage and certain things, you have it there for a certain time, amount of time to press.
I think it'll be okay. Either it will be or it won't be.
I got that map about the consumption. Some tent in the parking lot of Palos.
Yeah, in the front of the palace.
Let's put it inside.
The palace?
Timeless gallery. Van Dack, we only.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
If you look at the line on the map.
Well, Luke's late, too. His wife took extra long grocery shopping.
Is that the one behind Point though?
It's the one we've, no, 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 it's the one we've had a problem with.
James? Can you come up here and?
Well, I'm saying.
It'll be all, then it'll be a storm.
A second.
The whole thing's gonna be a storm.
I'm sorry, Andy, I didn't need to rip him away.
Little, little smoke shop.
Uh, Andy, there's James, if you had a question about.
Yeah, um, so, um, like this. I'm used to when we get these, look, we're looking at. All of these five things here are always addressed. Itemized. This, this is your, you're by the. They didn't itemize it, but they did find all the. So. We could postpone these.
And, well.
That's slight format change.
Yeah, but I'm used. Seeing that right there. Reading it. There's, there's this.
On an item by item basis.
Each one five, it's always.
So that kind of gives us a better idea of the understanding of the question.
Right, it does. Right here, they just, they just proved it with the condition, but these conditions really have nothing to do with.
They didn't, so what I'll have them do in the future is actually address each of these individually as they're going. So I'll make sure that before we make a motion to approve or deny, that each of those are covered on its own merits. So, so they did approve it generally speaking, but they didn't specifically state affirmatively or negatively on that.
I'm not, I'm, he's the former chair of the plan, which, not me, but we, I've only been reading this. And that's what we were fine, like if they didn't. Yes, we need. Not like we don't have. So we turn to one of those. Proposes necessary for public convenience like that.
Yeah, so, not even, you know what I mean? Yeah, in, in their packets. So if they were presented with all of those in, in a general sense, they answered affirmatively, but they didn't itemize. But I can make sure that they do that.
Think they should. I mean, you could find an example of probably what they're doing to us.
I saw that they were, but I guess I was a little bit differing to them in their, in their procedures, but they. We addressed these in, so this was my memo to them. This was a standard. Actually, yes, I even say here, should we say the motion either. The notification, so that's not what happened during the planning commission meeting. So they did recommend approval, but they didn't, but I can make sure that it all fits.
I'm sure that. I mean, if they went through these, then we would go. This is Dequinda, there's an auto body.
Well, it's ironic because that was, I think, the only one. That's, that was, that was my findings was. Was give the amount of other auto repair businesses. Yeah, and this was, this was my recommendations to them, so then obviously they.
Well, the other part is having the, hey, Luke, having the proper validation for these free.
Yeah, but I'm not even talking about unit, I'm, this is what.
Public convenience and whether this.
And that may be a list of coming in.
But I'm not talking about that. This is the format of these five. That's, it doesn't matter what business it is, it doesn't matter about any business.
Basically, if we're, if we're going to be doing motions in the future, I'll just sort of bring it to a halt and be like, we need to address these.
We used to have, it used to be nine of them. It used to be nine, really.
Okay, yeah, I know what you mean now, and that's what we use in case there's a court thing, that's the legal challenge thing. So if they address all those things and they go point, that's what you need, point by point.
I don't explain shit.
You're fine, I just didn't.
Back in the nineties, there was nine.
Yeah, yeah, they were not, it was not stated individually in their motion, it was just basically recommended approval with the noted conditions, but it was not stated.
Obviously, they're supposed to address.
Right, if they do that, then that's your, that's your criteria, not a female, but that's your rule of criteria to, uh, address the thing in case it was ever pointed out.
If you want. Which you can table this and do this at the next one.
Well, we probably just.
Yeah. Well, cause again, I, I even stated in my memo, I'm like.
Send it back to them.
And, you know, and this does need to, I don't know. Tobacco shop, there's nothing.
It's, it's, um, it's retail sales of hookah products. It's no consumption and one of the businesses.
Yeah, my wife just had to go grocery shopping, so I got home from work and I was like.
There's gonna be no consumption.
With Finn, I was like, where the fuck are you?
Go grocery shopping, it's more important than anything.
Dude, we don't have it. I'm pretty sure I'm gonna come home and take out.
I think it is.
But she also had it all day.
Let me see how I evaluated that, but I couldn't find a lot of other tobacco stores. Yet, I mean, there's like, this would be the fourth one in the entire city, so I would say it's.
She's, Finn's teething right now. Finn had COVID a week and a half, two weeks ago, and it was fucking awful. Luckily, we're on the other side of that, but teething's not any fun.
Having them. Refer this back to the plan, which to get the solid draft.
Yeah, we could just do this at the next meeting, basically revisit it and have them affirmatively find yes or no for each of those criteria.
What are we talking about?
Some requirements.
So. Hello, buddy? On the plant, on, on, on special land use, okay? There's these five criteria. And every other, uh, planning commission meeting we would see, we'd get this and there'd be the minutes. Each one of these, this would be addressed and they'd have a narrative.
Yeah.
What's that?
The board found this, but the board, they asked this, they let this state this, every one of them is addressed. And in fact, like this, this is the auto. Propose is necessary for public.
For what?
He says there's three in a thousand. So it doesn't even meet.
When is it?
It's a really high.
That night, does it go up to? Where's it at? If it's close, I might go vote it, but.
Ten minutes.
With like a detailed bullet about how it might be used, yeah.
What did they find?
Yeah, and that's not in that. Got it.
Do you wanna get started with the preliminaries?
Do the preliminaries, guys.
Let me just see where she is.
Ryan, I'll set that.
Ryan, we're ready.
All right, welcome to the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting, roll call, please.
Mayor what?
Here.
Mayor Cosan Long.
Here.
Council member Lucirol.
Here.
Council member Sullivan.
Excused, she's on her way.
Yeah, she's en route.
Uh, approval of the revised agenda?
Move approval of the agenda as revised.
Support.
And the press, special presentation proclamation of the resolution zero three dash zero eight dash zero twenty-three Women's History Month. And resolution zero three dash zero zero nine dash twenty-three International Women's Day. We're hereby recognizing proclamated as the resolutions are read.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would you like me to read them into the, uh, record, please?
Go ahead.
Uh, resolution to recognize March eighth, two thousand twenty-three as International Women's Day in the city of Hazel Park. Whereas women and girls are essential to success and progress in every aspect of our society and whereas. Wording opportunities for women and girls strengthen security, stability and prosperity for everyone. And whereas the city of Hazel Park stands with women and girls around the world in the critical work of protecting and advancing human rights. And whereas we celebrate the accomplishments and contributions of women and girls around the world. We also reaffirm our commitment to ensuring that all people can reach their full potential. And whereas there are many wonderful women in the city of Hazel Park. Who have and will continue to strive toward a future where women have an equal seat at the table. An equal voice in shaping decisions and equal opportunity to contribute fully to their city, state and nation. And whereas we take this opportunity to honor the women of Hazel Park and their everyday achievements. As they too make history, one voice at a time. Now therefore be it resolved, the Hazel Park City Council hereby recognizes March eighth, two thousand twenty-three as International Women's Day in the city of Hazel Park. Uh, resolution three dash zero zero eight twenty-three, a resolution to recognize March of two thousand twenty-three. As Women's History Month in the city of Hazel Park. Uh, whereas women of every race, religion, class, sexuality and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength. Of the United States in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas American women served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement secured in their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity. And whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural and social roles to advance our state, helping to create a more fair and just society. And whereas despite advances, the role of women in history is still overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching and study of American history. And whereas there are many strong women in the city of Hazel Park who have and will continue to empower others. Inspire fellow women and create history right here in our backyard. And whereas the women of the city of Hazel Park are not afraid to overcome challenges, become leaders and break barriers. And whereas we take this opportunity to honor the countless recorded and unrecorded achievements of the city of Hazel Park women. As they too make history in seen and unseen ways each day. Now therefore be it resolved, Hazel Park City Council hereby recognizes March two thousand twenty-three as Women's History Month in Hazel Park.
Thank you, sir. Open to civic announcements, anyone from the public have any civic announcements they'd like to come up and say? Seeing no one, closing civic announcements, city council having any? Hearing none.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank all the members of council, uh, everyone showed up to support the Hazel Park Promise Zone fundraiser dinner. Uh, last week, it was an extraordinarily successful event in which we raised over a hundred thousand dollars, uh, for the promise zone. It was a good time and, uh, I'm so grateful for, uh, all four of you showing up, bought tickets. And, uh, contributed to the fundraising events.
The staff.
Oh, and the, the staff, I'll thank the staff of the promise zone and I'm gonna thank all the department heads and employees here in the city of Hazel Park. We had an extraordinary overwhelming turnout, uh, from the city employees to this event. Uh, I think every department had, uh, bought a ticket, almost all of them showed up. And, uh, it was, uh, great to see that level of support. And I want to congratulate, uh, Linda Yono Marado in my office. Who won this year's Hitchcock Award for service of the promise zone and her contributions were, uh, extraordinary and the award was well deserved. As she raised almost forty thousand dollars for that dinner. So nobody raises money like Linda. So we thank her and congratulate her for that accomplishments. And we, uh, congratulate all of the promise zone recipients for, uh, their accomplishments and what they've done with the scholarship money. It's something the entire community can be proud of.
Yes, it is, very nice event. Any other civic announcements from anyone? Goes to public discussion, open up public discussion, name from the public wishing to speak. Don't all jump at once. Close public discussion, consent agenda one through nine, council.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda items one through nine.
Support.
A detention discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing under discussion.
Okay. Do we have someone here?
Uh, no, but, uh, county treasurer, Robert Whittenburg asked that, uh, I make an announcement on his behalf. Because he was unable to be here tonight and he wanted me to remind all of the taxpayers in Hazel Park. That the Oakland County Treasurer's Office is in the final stretch of their foreclosure prevention efforts. The tax foreclosure deadline for the two thousand twenty or prior year's taxes is on March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. That means if these taxes are not paid off by March thirty-first. Or any interested party hasn't entered into a repayment schedule with the treasurer's office by then, the property will be foreclosed. So anybody who, uh, needs help and assistance can schedule a taxpayer assistance meeting with the treasurer's office. By calling them at two four eight eight five eight zero six one one, or they may visit www dot oakgov dot com slash treasurer. Uh, there are some resources here, including the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund that can help with people who've been negatively impacted and can prove it by COVID. And there's also the Financial Empowerment Center, which offers counseling and coaching to taxpayers. And, uh, the Lake Shore Legal Aid Fund provides free legal services. So we'll place these resources, uh, on our city's Facebook page and on our website.
Thank you. Uh, any more discussion, hearing none? Is there anyone here from, uh, John R. Discount Express Store? McComb Contracting, Horizon Enterprises? With consent agenda passes, it takes us to administrative reports. Uh, orders to add chapter thirteen, thirteen point one six zero, post-construction stormwater management first reading. I know this is a area for Tim Young. Am I correct? Okay.
Yes, this is, uh, Tim Young is here to answer any questions, I believe, uh, Amanda Mason also reviewed this, uh. Tim?
Give us some synopsis, please. Okay, um, so basically what this is, this is in addition to our MS four permit from the state of Michigan. And our adoption of the Oakland County, uh, stormwater standards. Uh, the state of Michigan for, for a long time has been wishing to get some kind of post-construction ordinance going in all cities. And basically what a post-construction ordinance is going to do is that. A development that puts in some type of stormwater control on the property for the betterment of the water heading into the watershed. That the city has some kind of ordinance to give us a little bit of authority to make sure. That these, uh, stormwater devices are properly maintained and, uh, properly cleaned. And they keep records of the activities of it. And this way we can hold accountable for anything that's not properly, uh, done. For instance, Ashley Capital's got a monster of a system underground over there. Uh, we as a city would not have the resources to tackle it should it start to fail. So that's what this post-construction ordinance allows to do.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
I had a question, I read this through and I didn't see Saran Wrap anywhere in that.
Oh, Tim has a, uh, an announcement out there at front.
Oh, yes.
Do you wanna make the announcement, Tim, or did you want me to make it at the end of the meeting? Can you proudly?
We can proudly announce that no toilets exploded during the recent sewer cleaning, uh, activity, so.
And what's the percentage, one out of, one percent out of a billion?
Uh, I've been jetting the sewers in our city for over twenty years, I can count on one hand any issues we've had in the houses, so.
There's a chance like in the dumb and dumber sense, where there's, you're telling me there's a chance.
You're telling me there's a chance, you're telling me there's a chance.
It's probably that they had it happen once and it probably.
Again, if you listen to the media, the sky is always falling anyway, so what's the difference?
So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number oh three dash twenty-three.
Support.
A dissension discussion, motion passes. Item two, special land use, case twenty-three dash zero one, twenty-two oh thirty-one Dequinda Road. Counsel, it would be a pleasure, Ed, you wanna refer it back?
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, go ahead, if that's what you want.
To, uh, the planning commission so that they can address the items one through five.
Are you going to refer both of the cases back, sir?
I think they have to be, they haven't.
Yeah, they both.
Addressed.
So in your motion, if you could, uh, just do both of them at the same time?
I'm gonna move that, uh, administrative reports number two and number three, the special land use, is be referred back to the planning commission. To address the, uh, the conditions, the five conditions.
Support.
And let the record show that that's case twenty-three dash zero one and case twenty-three dash zero two. A dissension, any more discussion? There we go. See you next time around. And, uh, application for a sandbar constructed in the south end of town for a summer festival. Mr. Klobuchar?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, they're on their way, uh, according to.
Talk really slowly.
Uh, they are on their way, according to Kurt Gore, who has been in communication with them.
Know where they're going?
They are pulling up in the parking lot. Go right ahead, Kurt.
Just come up.
Name, what's going on?
Name, record, address.
Uh, Kurt Gore, two one six four zero John R. Road, Hazel Park. Members of council, attorney and city clerk. Um, there is currently an application for the summer fest, uh, which we're proposing to take place. On June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, um, of this summer. It's being put on by members of Eastern Palace Club Beach Bar, sponsored by the Metro Times. Uh, which is something very big to get the Metro Times that are interested in Hazel Park. We've been in communication actually with them for the last couple of years, trying to entice them to move some of the events that they have over to Hazel Park. So this is an event that we've been, uh, planning for the last few months. And we have one of the members walking in, um.
So very sorry, everyone.
Um, so the, what we're proposing, and I believe that you have some more information, I, I don't know. I made a little bit of losses as far as how much the information you have, is Dustin walking in?
Dustin's walking in, he's parking his car right now.
Okay.
Everybody had seven o'clock on their calendars, we've all been sitting at the Eastern Palace, uh, club and discussing this meeting, exactly. And have a lovely little panic attack.
You made it just in time.
Um, so just to continue, I think Dustin Leslie, who is the main operator of the Eastern Palace, uh, club. Along with, uh, Jim from the Metro Times, I think they can give a, a more, um, specific description of exactly what's planned. Um, I as a business owner and the owner of the building are contributing a lot of time and effort towards the success of this program as well. Um, but we've put a lot of time into planning it out. And I think again Dustin would have the, probably the best explanation what's going on, Jared, I don't know if there's anything that you.
I could speak to the cannabis side of the event, obviously, um, I, this is Jim here at the Metro Times. But, um, the Curtis and Dustin have contracted the Michigan Cannabis Association to handle the application part of the event. Uh, for the cannabis portion, um, but beyond that, you know, this is really Dustin's event. Uh, and, uh, the street closures and the, the larger fare, uh, is what they'll be handling. Um, however, I can't answer any questions you've got regarding, you know, the security for the cannabis side of things, the setup for that, uh, you know, how we're gonna be operating. And, and making sure we're regulatorily compliant with the state, uh, and you guys here in the city.
Justin, your name and record?
Uh, Jared Jeffries, Michigan Cannabis Association.
And who else do we have speaking?
Uh, Dustin, uh, and I'm sorry, guys, why don't you speak for yourselves?
I'm Jim Cohen, I'm from the Metro Times.
My name is Dustin Leslie, I'm one of the owners of Eastern Palace Club.
Okay. Well, we kinda like the idea of what's going on here. And if there's some unanswered questions like security and different situations and how things are gonna be handled. And I'm sure you've already been apprised of that from the, from the staff.
Why don't we, yeah, let, uh, we'll let Dustin give his pitch to you the same way that he gave it to the administrative staff. And, uh, see if he can answer a lot of the questions. He had a really comprehensive, uh, spiel in the can for us that was very informative and answered pretty much everything, so. Okay. You walked in, you're ready to go?
I'm ready to go, yeah, always, because I believe in this and I think it's great. First, I introduce myself, Dustin Leslie, one of the owners of Eastern Palace Club. Uh, I'm really excited to be here in Hazel Park, uh, to kind of toot your guys' horn right off the bat. You have been the best city that I've ever worked with, working with businesses. And I've been working with hospitality for over thirty years. Uh, my background is in, uh, not just operational management of hospitality, like restaurants and bars. But also of, of major events and productions of major events. Uh, my partner, Mike Pierce, who couldn't be here today because he is actually operating Eastern Palace Club as we speak. Uh, him and I worked together, uh, with Pig and Whiskey, DIY Street Fair. We also founded, uh, Craftcom, which was in Clausen, we did vegan and vodka in Royal Oak. Uh, and a number of smaller, uh, incidental events as well, including Ferndale Spring Fever, which was a music festival. We're used to working on a very large scale, uh, but when, uh, I watched, uh, a certain city council meeting about Spark in the Park. Uh, which, well, I did and I watched it a couple.
Yeah.
Well, no, it's great because it gave me the opportunity when we were thinking of investing into, uh, Eastern Palace Club. We hadn't signed the lease yet, uh, I thought that the city had done its due diligence and that it was working. But I also really felt like it was trying to come together to.
I also really felt like it was trying to come together to make things happen, and it was something that rubbed off on me. But also in my copious notes, I kind of took the parameters that was set here, uh, as far as, uh, the cannabis portion of an event goes, and I decided that if we were ever gonna do something like that, we were gonna follow to the law, to the letter, what was, what was raised by city council. And there was a couple of those things that stood off right off the bat, uh, which I'm just gonna get into, and then we're gonna touch into it as we go through this, this list here. But one of the first things that was brought into our attention was capacity. In the numbers that they were looking for a cannabis event, the number was bandied about at 2,500. So we put together an event that's on private, mostly private property. It's like 90% private property, the cannabis portion, and it would have 1,000 people capacity at one time. So we actually took your number and we lowered it, because I figured if 2,500 is good, 1,000 is better. One of the other things, uh, that was brought up was, uh, the music, and it was about the hours of operation. So when we looked for a date for the event, I thought, let's get as close to the solstice as we can get, so we have natural light, so we don't have to bring an artificial light, so we have, you know, 10:30 as the sun sets, like 10:26 or something. And so we thought, let's bring it as close to the solstice, we don't have to have artificial light, and then let's go by what city council said as far as the times. So let's stop the stage at nine o'clock.
I saw that.
Yeah. It's perfect. And so, and, and that was, it was lighting, and then the other thing, which is a big one, was parking. And so, one thing I will say about Eastern Palace Club, 60 to 70% of the people that come into my new bar are from the neighborhood. And when we designed this, we designed it as an idea, as a block party. And so we expect to have 60 to 70% of the people that are coming to this festival to be coming from the neighborhoods.
Locals.
Locals. And so when we talk about parking, I would say in their driveway. And then they'll walk, and they'll come, and they'll join it. They'll push the strollers, they'll come out there. And when we talked about genre, which I'll get into when we get in a little bit, we talked about a beach vibe. It's a welcome to summer, we have 10 months of winter, and whatever the heck this month is in March that we're going through right now, and we thought, let's, let's bring out summer, let's have outdoor games, let's have neighbors getting to know each other. Uh, the community has been so great to us, and we thought this would be a great way to do it. And that's kind of just my quick spiel, and I'm gonna run through these bullet points real fast, if that's okay, unless there's any questions right off the bat.
Good.
Okay. And so, uh, kinda gave you the idea, uh, Sandbar Summer Fest is the overarching, uh, idea for the event. Uh, we're gonna have a real sand beach, which is super fun, and it will be dropped off and cleaned up.
Sand beach, is that gonna be in the street?
In the street. That's the idea.
You're gonna be with our DPW director to make sure it navigates in our drains, right?
100%. There's, there's the silt.
My biggest concern, thank you.
Yep, and there's some silt stuff, and, and we already, uh, spoke a little bit about that, and so, uh, we'll make the sausage as we get past this.
Cellophane off of toilet seats.
100%.
The sand.
And so, one of the main things about, uh, doing this event, and having it be such a community-minded, we're gonna have a festival stage, outdoor games, food vendors, uh, we're gonna bring in food vendors, local artists. Uh, I love an event where there's a lot of fun stuff to see, we're gonna have some other vendors there as well, uh, but also, uh, beach-style cocktails, like what we do best over at Eastern Palace Club, and some, also some craft beer. But also there'll be lemonade stands and NA stuff along, because, uh, that's really important to us as well. When we get to the high tide, when we talk about high tide, it's an event inside an event. And so if you can imagine it as a 21 and over, so there's a second set of security, there's a second set of entrance, so it's not gonna be running on a side door next to the event, it's gonna be part of it, and it's gonna take place, uh, in Eastern Palace, uh, parking lot. And there, there'll be dispensary sales, a cannabis consumption tent, cannabis branded booths, also a food vendor, one very close to my heart, which is Smoked Lotus, which is already located in our parking lot, so it'll be a perfect fit for them, uh, and also some local artists out on the street. We'll also have some cornhole games and some fun stuff. Uh, the dates are June 24th, June 25th, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, uh, last call, 9:30, you know, so we got time to get people out, uh, and last call on Sunday would be 5:30. So plenty of time, plenty of light, so when people are returning, had somebody parked in the neighborhoods, when they're returning to those areas, there's light. They're not a bunch of people wandering around in the dark through the neighborhoods. We're gonna have plenty of light still, which is a big, big issue, and, and we wanted to mitigate that right off the bat. Uh, again, where? South end of Hazel Park, uh, John R. Road, Central Park Plaza, our town market, which is, uh, the old Salem Market, which is being redone. If you've seen it, it looks great, and it's gonna look even better here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, and then high tide would take place in Eastern Palace Parking Lot. There are some attached maps, if you guys wanna take a peek at that, which you may have already seen. And I just wanna go over it just real briefly, so we have just some understanding what we're talking about here. Uh, we're trying to, we try to segregate in my, in, in, in the past, when I've done these events, sorry, is that we try to keep food in a general area, almost like a food court. Uh, we try to keep, uh, the alcohol spread out. One thing you're not gonna see, which I did talk to, uh, when we talked to the city earlier, was I don't believe in beer tents. I think that they cause, uh, a lot of problems. I think that people drink, uh, too much, too fast in beer tents, because you go to the beer tent and you, "I'm gonna get a beer, I'm gonna get two, because I'm in the tent and I'm gonna drink two, and then I'm gonna go to the stage." And so to me, it's, when it's more of a rolling kind of thing, it, it just makes more sense, but also for security purposes, it's much easier, much, much easier, to make sure that everyone's 21 and over, when it's happening out in the open. When you get in, everybody jammed into a small space, you can sneak people in, and it just generally tends to cause more problems than not. Uh, so when we did Craftcom in Clausen, it was a big thing that they wanted a beer tent, but we showed them that it's actually, MLCC prefers this because of the open set, it's much easier and much more secure when it's open. Uh, the sand beach, as you say, uh, it's not that big, it's, I wish it was the whole street, but we can't do that. It's, uh, like, not even half the block there, but I think it would, it would make a really, uh, a big impact if there was a stage and you could go and kids dancing in, in the sand, I think it would be a lot of fun, beach balls, you know, all that good stuff.
Up to you.
And then, uh, artists and vendors, you see all those tents, those, those are the spaces that we do have for local artists. Uh, and one thing that people always ask is, you know, what are we charging, what are we looking for? It's gonna be an incredibly fair rate, and it'd be probably less than you see anywhere else, because we really want this to take off, and we really want it to be engaging, and we want people to have some ownership, especially if they're from the community and the neighborhoods. Uh, obviously, Porta Johns, there's three entrances and exits on this, all will be manned, per Greg, our insurance guy who's back here, uh, they will be manned, uh, either by, uh, Hazel Park Police Officers or our, our security team as well. So, uh, and if you've ever been to Art Speeds and Eats, the way you kind of come in, it'll be a very similar circumstance. It's not just gonna be a flooding of people coming in you'll have to go through, you know. One question, two people have asked, and it's, it won't be a dog-friendly event. Uh, I love dogs, they're my favorite, and, uh, festivals are a terrible place to take dogs. It's loud, it's hot, and also for insurance purposes, uh, in a closed area, uh, we just aren't gonna have it, and we'll make sure people know, but we just can't have the, the dogs there. And so that's the map for the Sandbar Fest, and if you go to the next one, it will look at the, uh, the high tide. The green, the green ones are dispensaries, they're 20 by 40 tents, those will be the places, uh, that will be, uh, serving cannabis.
Ours is black and white.
Oh, yours is? You got a black and white on? You got a, whoa, you did.
Here, here. Black and white, here. Good.
Yeah, we got it here, we got it here.
Oh, you have it.
All right. Thank you, sir. So the green ones, uh, are the cannabis, uh, the sales area, the dispensary sales areas. Each one will be manned by one of their own personal security guards, as well as our security. Uh, we have Smoked Lotus BBQ in there, and we have a bathroom area, and the big yellow tent is the consumption tent. It's a 30 by 60, it'll be lit from the insides, it'll have three sides on it, so it'll have a backside and the two sides, and so it will be an enclosed area, but the front facing into the festival will be open, uh, on that. And then the area for MAGE there is where we kind of imagine, that's kind of the, the entranceway, where, or, I'm sorry, the, uh, the games area, in, in, in an area where people can kind of overflow out to. Uh, but again, the consumption area is the, uh, yellow area. There will be a, uh, the entrance, as you can see, the main entrance is gonna be over by the door of Eastern Palace Club, and there'll be, again, there's two entrances there, so there'll be the, they'll have to come through the exit to get through that security, and then there'll be a second security to get into that area, so we'll make sure the 21 and over.
The consumption tent. Shouldn't you think that would be closer to the main road, not to encroach upon the residents if any amount of extras smoke get out?
I'm gonna defer this to Jared.
Just based on the physical size of the tent and the positioning of the other gates that we have to do in order to be compliant, provide entrances and exits, there's just really nowhere else in this footprint. Like, there's a wall that runs across between the parking lot and the sidewalk, so we can't stretch over that location. Um, if we put it in the road, it'll completely take up that entire road segment and MAGE, it's really the only other place I can think of on this footprint.
Well, that's kind of what I was looking, it was probably MAGE.
Then it blocks our exit, because the exit from the cannabis area is on MAGE, so that the whole thing flows like a circle, instead of creating a double choke point.
I got, I got you, I got you there, but, but how, how is your ventilation system? How is this going to be? How close are you to the residents there?
It's an open tent on the front, um, the ventilation system is debris. It is an open cannabis consumption festival, there's very limited, like, even with ventilation on that tent, even if four walls and ventilation on that tent, it's still gonna smell.
Gotta go somewhere.
I'm not saying it's not going to smell.
Yeah.
Hey, that is going.
How's your relationship with the neighbors?
I think he's just, you know.
Why have it right on?
Wanting you guys to.
Further away.
I mean, I agree. Think about how you could mitigate the smell a little bit in any way possible.
For sure. Sure.
And I think further from a house, I'd rather see it at least 100 feet or better from a house.
That's basically the entire parking lot there is about.
100 feet?
100 feet. Yeah, it's a 60-foot tent.
I'd put it in the middle of MAGE, myself.
You can only put two of them in there.
I'd put it right here in MAGE in general.
But even if you put it in the middle of MAGE, and I'm just throwing this out there again, and I think your concerns are valid, I understand why you're raising them, uh, Mayor.
Fair.
I think if you, if you, even if you put it in MAGE, it's still, I don't know that it's gonna make any appreciable difference.
I think it's, it's gonna make a little bit.
Because you'd have the open that would be.
Yeah.
Parallel to, and it would blow more that way. I like that it's blowing that.
Yeah, I think you're, I, I, you're, you've got the wall behind it, and you're, you're, you wanna funnel the smell out, if you were to put it like that, you'd, kind of think of which way the, you know, which way the prevailing winds are gonna go, I'm, you might be better off with the additional barrier.
So we just call it an edible tent and nobody smoke?
What's that?
We just call it an edible tent and nobody smoke?
So I have this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Come on up. Well, it's for, so everybody can hear what you're saying.
Hello, Kurt Gorr again. So, um, prior to really planning the event, I had discussions with most of the local neighbors. We have a renter that just moved in that backs up to the wall, I've had communication with him. Um, the one house actually is vacant, that's directly across, uh, from there, and then we have another gentleman, Rico, who, uh, I know very well. So, most of the neighbors in that, we wouldn't have proposed this in the area if I hadn't already done my homework ahead of time and knowing everybody that lives around that area. Everybody knows me.
I think, I think that for peace of mind, that you do a little survey and have some people sign off that they do not mind this being there for the two-day event, for like four or five houses beyond your tent.
Yeah, well, a, a, as a resident in that area, I can tell you, the smell of cannabis in that area generally is, we'll take your advice.
I'm not saying the smell's not going to be there, I'm just saying that I don't want to have to be, I don't want it to be so encroachable upon the neighborhood that becomes a problem for anyone, us or you. I'm trying to, if there's, if we say we got three or four houses on the backside of this that are saying, hey, we don't mind, okay, that's 40, 50 feet, that's two, that's 150 feet of, of space, a barrier, because they didn't mind. You understand what I'm saying? Because they're giving you that leeway.
Okay. I, I think with, uh, your suggestion of maybe talking with the neighbors along with, um, at the smell mitigation, maybe looking at doing some scrubbers, there's something that's capable, yeah.
I'm not saying you're not gonna smell the pot, okay? I'm just saying we try to make this as friendly as it, as we can.
Yeah, so long as.
Talk to our neighbors, we make it friendly.
Are there any, um, are there any vegetarians complaining about the Smoked Lotus BBQ smoke, smell in the neighborhood?
Yeah, yeah, we go without them, too. But I'm not being hard about it, I'm just trying to be reasonable.
Well, and we've done, based on a lot of the other events that have taken place, and that's why we invited Jared Jeffries to be back and part of this, he, he's got extensive experience with the various.
No doubt, Kurt.
Okay.
No doubt.
Okay.
I, I believe you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm just pointing out that we're, we're doing our best within the confines of making this a successful, uh, festival for the entire neighborhood, so.
All I'm asking is you get some people to say that they do not mind the house or two behind where you're having this. That's not so hard.
Yeah, get some, I don't think we're giving them.
A couple houses, that's 100 feet.
I think what you want is some kind of.
Just, just some kind of notice that they're acknowledging.
Right. This is gonna happen, we're letting you know, and apparently from what Kurt said, he's already, I mean, they're, they're pretty plugged into the neighborhood.
Don't wanna say we.
So, I understand, and you guys understand what Mayor is saying here, right? We wanna make sure, we try to balance everyone's interest when we do something like this, wanna make sure we're not inconveniencing, uh, a big chunk of residents or anything like that, so he's trying to balance things and make sure we're doing the best we can to mitigate the smell within reason. It's, it's, is what it is. You know, in, in, in my house, in the middle of the block in Hazel Park, on the street that I live at, you know, on any given day in my backyard, I'm gonna smell cannabis or something like that from one of them.
Do all the time.
So, you know, uh, it kind of is what it is.
Don't like it, but I don't, I don't.
I mean, to be frank, whether this licensed event takes place or not, and then you continue to move forward with the high ti, no, I'm sorry, the Summer Sandbar Fest, you're gonna smell weed coming out of that fest. It's a public event in Hazel Park, guys.
Did you not underst, you didn't hear what I said?
I, I know, I, I understand what you're saying.
What I'm saying.
We appreciate your consideration, Mayor, and we will do our best to work with the local neighbors.
Yeah, sure. I think we've.
We understand it's gonna smell. We all understand, we have nine cannabis places here, we understand we have 30-some-plus grows, and probably 10 processing and everything else, and we even have a couple mushroom places, too. And I understand it, it employs a lot of people in town, and yes, we do understand. So, I'm trying to make this a positive event by bringing out the obvious, that we need not to piss off our neighbors.
Sure. 100% agree.
That's all.
Our goal is to bring the neighbors in to the party.
Exactly.
And not exclude them, so I think we're all on the same page. we're all on the same page.
That's all I'm looking for.
No, a hundred percent.
Just a notification, if they were notified and aware and they maybe, if they want to sign that they don't mind, that's even a perk on you.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Love it.
And we did have several notification plans, including a, you know, a door docking and a postcard that we wanted to send out to the residents in the blocks.
Yeah, and we're gonna give some wristbands in the first couple of blocks that's right there.
Awesome.
We wanna make it a very positive event.
Hundred percent.
And I commend you for doing this. The South End of our town has been.
Our goal is to not just.
An unfounded area for many years.
Our goal is to make this a repeatable event in something that we can do together and that we can do it not just once a year. We can have fun times in the fall too, you know? And as I told you when you were in my office, whether or not it is a repeatable event will, you know, in large part depend upon how well this one goes.
Hundred percent, yeah, that's why we started small.
So, we're, I.
We got that question answered.
You know.
One more question.
Yeah, of course.
Security.
We're gonna get.
You have your own security.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna have Hazel Park officers on overtime. I'm sure you've talked to Mr. Klobuchar about this.
We did.
And I'm sure you have this under control, right?
That is a true statement. His statement to me was he would rather pay the Hazel Park Police to be there than pay for private security, which is a wise decision.
Hundred percent, and, and we've gone beyond that today, uh, thanks to Greg. Uh, he actually brought in, uh, an acquaintance of his, Tyler, who actually works with, uh, off-duty police officers as far as security team. It will work, uh, even closer with, uh, Hazel Park Police Department. So we've actually made an improvement in the last hour. We, we met Tyler, so, you know, as this is, is developing, we keep making better. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move a little quicker because we all probably have a million other things to do. So the attendees, uh, Sandbar Summer Fest, we expect about three thousand attendees per day with a peak number of about two thousand people. And, uh, for the space that we have, we could, we could easily absorb about six thousand people, uh, but I think for the first-year event, that's a fine number. Uh, we are, for the cannabis side, the capacity for the space we're using is gonna be a thousand people. That doesn't mean it's gonna be the same thousand people, the people can travel through and so they can come in, and so our goal is, we're hoping that we attract, you know, over the course of the day, a lot of people will go through High Tide, will also go through the main event, and that's what Jim's specialty is.
It works out where it holds more than a thousand people, so be it.
Yeah.
As long as it's done in right, the right way, respectfully, it's in the neighborhood and to the other businesses, that's all that matters.
It, it, the, the space itself, uh, does hold more than a thousand people.
No.
But for a first year, uh, we're kinda looking at that at one time, but again, we're cycling people through, because I hope people go in and then they're like, let's go to the food truck. You know, they come, they leave the event, they go, somebody else comes in, because I, we kind of really wanna normalize that twenty-one-and-over area the way that beer tents were normalized, you know, back in the day, very similar.
I think, I think you got it on the right path. Any council members have any questions?
No, I've, I've looked at this ad nauseam. Um, I just want to, to say, uh, I appreciate the, the Spark in the Park was a learning opportunity for, for you guys, for us, uh, and I think that, uh, with this, uh, you've not only met our expectations, I, I think you've exceeded them, and I'm really looking forward to this.
The only question was the space, the buffer, that was it. That was really just a respect issue.
Do you guys have any more questions? If not, are you comfortable voting tonight?
I'm comfortable with it, unless you wanna work any fine details.
We can work it out, you can approve a subject to, uh.
We do, approval on first reading.
But it's not an ordinance, right?
Reading, but first.
You can, we'll bring.
When you bring everything else.
Right, we'll, we'll, we'll consider it a preliminary approval.
Because Alyssa may have some questions.
And, and that will help, uh, their cause with the state if they get approval tonight, and then we'll bring back, uh, specifics on security plans and, uh, traffic flow and deliveries of sand when those things are gonna.
I'd like to have the other council members have.
Right, right. So.
Anyways.
We can talk for five more minutes, for sure. Yeah, but I don't wanna have to repeat the whole thing, so.
No, I wouldn't, I don't think I would, I just, I'm really excited about this. Uh, I love the South End where we're at right now. I see the potential that I saw when I first moved to Ferndale twenty years ago, and I think that we're on the cusp of something really great, and I think when we start to see more businesses move in, uh, people recognize just how amazing that neighborhood is and the people and the community that's there, and so I do think that this is a great way to highlight that in a, in, not just a super positive way, but just for the residents themselves so they can have some ownership over the neighborhood and over their area. Uh, and to me, that's really important, and as a business owner who plans on being there forever, uh, and, 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 and serve, serving the community there, I think this is a great little kickoff that we'll look forward to every year, when the sun finally frickin' comes out. You know what I mean? That's what I'm looking forward to.
I, uh, I move for conditional approval of Sandbar Summer Fest and High Tide Event, contingent on continued compliance with any directives from the City Manager's Office.
Support. Any more discussion, dissension? Motion passes, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
And we're all excited about this new event coming to town, don't get us wrong, but we just wanna make sure it's done in respectful, proper way.
And again, I don't think anyone is in any way critical of your comments, Mr. Mayor, because those comments, there's a lot of people in town who, this is something new, and sometimes new things are scary, and I think everybody's glad that you raised important questions like that and they're prepared to answer them, so that just shows you're doing your job.
Questions were raised with Spark in the Park.
Yep.
And then they tuck from that, and I respect that, that you tucked that and rolled it to this venue accordingly.
Things work best.
It goes over a thousand people that be half, so be it.
Yep.
We know this, fifteen hundred, whatever, the, the venue will hold a couple of thousand easy. We understand that.
Since Alyssa was not able to be here, she's in route now, I don't know if she'll make it before, uh, the meeting is over, but, uh, we may have you come back just to answer some questions in the future when we finalize up.
Next meeting.
But you know, you know that we're, you know, so she can weigh in and make sure.
Absolutely.
Come at the next meeting and answer any questions, please.
This is just the start, there's a lot more. And like I said, it all, Dustin, it all depends on how well this event goes, how well it's received by the community, and, uh, the better job that you do, the better chance that you have to make this.
Better opportunity.
Uh, an annual event and to bring more events like this in the future. So, you, we, we aim to, we aim to be cooperative and welcoming, but the Mayor is correct, we, we also have to protect our residents.
Hundred percent, yeah.
It's just all respect from everyone. If more we ask, the more inclusion we have to everyone, even if they're not for it, at least include them.
You wanna hear the voice?
Yeah.
Yeah, a hundred percent, yeah. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Go forth and do it right.
Lords and Commissions, seeing none, old business, none, new business? Anybody have any new business?
No.
Only once, twice, no communication from department heads? Any department heads wanna come up in, uh, Tom? Our DPW Director, Tom Jones, is here to talk about sidewalk programming trees.
Uh, evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanna announce, um, March, the week of March twenty-seventh, we'll start our yard waste pickup curb side, so it's one week prior to the normal, uh, start date, so, um, everybody can start cleaning their yards out and all that good stuff. Um, also, we're shooting for April twenty-second for our Earth Awareness Day at our DPW yard, so I'll have, uh, some postings for that, a little more information on the next council meeting. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, communications from any other department heads? Seeing no one?
Anyone?
And city attorney?
No.
Nice to have you here today.
Switch of roles.
You sure you don't wanna have a comment? It's an opportunity.
Well, okay, happy birthday to my son, Ben, who's fourteen today.
Uh, happy birthday, Ben.
Congratulations, that's sweet. Uh, City Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, look, I'll just update you, we've, we've been really busy here at City Hall, and, uh, I wanna compliment all of my employees and especially all of my department heads for the job that they've been doing here. We're, we're managing a lot of different grants, and grants are great, they're money for the city of Hazel Park and resources and cool new things, but they also take a lot of staff time to be able to, to manage these things, and, you know, everybody's really had to step up their game a lot, and everybody's accepted a lot of extra work and extra duties. So I want you to know that, uh, the department heads are really working for you and working for the residents of this town. Uh, we've had some discussions with our lobbyists in Lansing, as well as the Michigan Municipal League. As you all know, Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken, and we are really doing our best with this opportunity this year to try and, uh, make some changes that will ensure more equitable funding for cities like Hazel Park. And, uh, I wanted to let some folks know, there were apparently some people today who were at the Board of Review who were upset about their property tax bill, and, uh, anybody who is upset and you want a lesson in municipal finance and how it works and why, uh, we all hate this system, but it is the system that we all have to live with and no one at this table can change that because it's two, uh, state constitutional, uh, initiatives paired with, uh, some very bad enabling legislation from the Michigan Legislature that have created a mess. So hopefully, the legislature will begin to untangle that mess a little bit this year, but I'll be happy to meet with you and explain to you why, you know, your, your taxes are so high in Hazel Park and why this system is so inequitable. Uh, no one came up to public discussion, if anybody's here in the audience that, uh, had a high tax bill and wanna talk to me afterwards, I'll be happy to explain things to you as best that I can. We're gonna try and do, uh, at our budget session, another little spiel about headly Prop A and revenue sharing and taxes, uh, when we do that, so it's like a refresher course. Because in two thousand and fifteen, when we passed our last millage election, the average Hazel Park resident knew a lot more about how Michigan's system of municipal finance worked than the average Michigan legislator did, and I can tell you that that is the fact because I was on, uh, task forces and commissions with several legislators at the time, and they just did not understand it. So, uh, we're fortunate, Mike McFaul's up there now, he's had a pretty darn good understanding of how this works, and there are, uh, a caucus of, uh, dozens of legislators that are former local government members, and I think there's critical mass there that we actually have a chance to make something happen.
A bad decision was term limits.
Well, we've modified term limits a little bit, and you're right, Mayor, because the term limits were so short that by the time legislators understood anything, they were already out.
Well, they're not, they're working for the lobbyists, so they've got other interests.
Right, that is, there is an element of that, so we have to make sure that our, we're the municipalities, we don't have a big checkbook, uh, to hand out to legislators, so what we have to do is make sure that we bring the people on our side and we have the facts on our side, and we, we have, uh, a, a good moral and, uh, logical argument to make when we're up there, so.
Thank you.
Oh, DTE. I did speak to DTE multiple times, I've expressed the frustrations of, uh, Mayor and Council and many residents who have spoken with me, uh, for those power outages, and, you know, all of the local leaders are pretty united here that DTE has to do a better job. Now, this wasn't, you know, this was a, this was a bad ice storm, okay, but again, uh, still, DTE needs to do a better job of preventative maintenance to ensure that those trees are far enough away from the lines so that we're not seeing as many power outages as we did. So, uh, again, we are on it, but I also want everybody to know, local government has no ability to regulate DTE, okay? They, they, we can't regulate them, that's state law, they are governed completely by the state, so we have no, uh, ordinance that we can pass, we have no way to compel them to be here, we have no way to make them do anything. That is your state legislature. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman LaCarrel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, thank everybody for coming out and participating. Uh, it's getting nicer, watch out for the bicyclists. Um, if you wanna come and join the Hazel Park Casual Bike Club, they'll be starting probably in May. It's a good time to get your bike tuned up and visit Patrick up at Sullivan's Bike Shop. And it was a, it was a really good event at the, um, Promise Zone. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, the Promise Zone. It's, to see some kids that have gone on and been in college for ten years, uh, getting, advancing their education into programs, uh, attorneys and teachers and, uh, and it was good too to see the, uh, the machinist, the guy, the kid that was doing the machine shop, the trade school part, which is very important, right? Right, that's where you and I are doing.
Yeah, we're trades.
Um, so it's, and the, I don't know, Ed, if you wanted to give a shout out to that one gentleman that gave us the twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah, I will, thank you for reminding me of that, Andy. Uh, Sam Hadad is the owner of Capital Sales over on Nine Mile, and, uh, you know, pretty early on in my administration, Capital Sales passed up the Hazel Park Raceway as the largest taxpayer in the city of Hazel Park, and he was the largest taxpayer until the Tri-County Commerce, uh, Center went in. And Sam has always been very generous to the city of Hazel Park, and when we needed some extra money to buy a piece of playground equipment in Scout Park one time, we unveiled this wonderful community fundraising program where we were gonna raise, uh, seventeen thousand dollars to buy this piece of equipment, and we had about a thousand dollars raised right after it hit the newspapers, and Sam called and said, I wanna pay the rest of it off. So, he did. So, at last week's Promise Zone Dinner, uh, we did a call at the end of the dinner, like we usually do, to try to get, uh, we wanted to raise an additional twenty grand before we left, and Sam raised his hand and wrote a check for the entire twenty thousand dollars. So, uh, he's supported every, uh, community initiative, he's supported our millage elections when he knew it was gonna raise his taxes substantially, and, uh, he helped us pass them. So, uh, I think it's a testament to his generosity and his community spirit that he wrote that check, and, uh, as he said, you know, there's nothing, no good point about being the richest man in the graveyard. So, uh, I'm glad and I'm grateful, and that money will be put to good use because the Hazel Park Promise Zone does amazing things.
Good. It does, it, it's the whole thing, it's, it's getting kids, uh, an opportunity. I was talking with Ellen Lipton afterwards, and there was a student that's in the, they're getting into the adult ed, and this girl thought that she had made some mistakes and ruined her life, and then Ellen's telling her, no, we can, you know, after the GED, there's money for you to go to college and stuff, and it, it's, it really makes a difference in kids' life, it's really something, so, um.
And, uh, speaking of making a difference, I can't wait, we're gonna, you and I are gonna talk, and we're gonna really try to put together a cooperative effort now that you're President of Youth Assistance with, uh, the city, with Youth Assistance, with the schools, with the Community Coalition, and we're going to try even harder to make sure that we're providing the best possible, uh, programs for our kids to give them the best shot at success.
Thanks. And on that note, if you have kids, hug them and tell them you love them every day. Have a great night.
If you're as pissed at DT as I am, uh, please call the Michigan Public Service Commission, shoot an email, call your legislator, uh, you know, there's a company that is announcing record profits and the fact that they reduce infrastructure allocations, uh, in advance of quarterly reporting, uh, and it's just, I'm sick of wondering as a resident every time the wind blows, every time it rains, every time it snows, if I'm gonna lose power. Uh, that night, uh, we lost power, uh, and me, my wife, and my five-month-old child had to all cuddle together because we didn't wanna take a hotel room from somebody that needed it because there was a run on hotels. The next morning, we needed to take a month and a half supply of breast milk, which for the parents in the audience and at home, understand how painstaking that is to obtain, to my mother-in-law's house in Detroit. Uh, my child at that point also had COVID, so not only did I end up getting COVID for the fifth time, and my wife got it, and my mother-in-law got it, DTE, please get your shit together, I'm just really, really sick of this. Uh, on a happier note, two years ago, uh, around this time, uh, when I was a new baby city council member, I introduced a resolution to, uh, pass a human rights ordinance in the city of Hazel Park that banned discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. Uh, we were the last city in the state to do that in advance of a Michigan Supreme Court decision that found that those protections existed, and recently, the Michigan Senate and the Michigan House passed an expansion of Elliot Larson, so no other city in the state has to, uh, pass a, a resolution because Big Gratch is going to sign that into law on Thursday, so that is a, a massive accomplishment for the LGBTQ community, and I'm extraordinarily excited about it. And, uh, my child turns six months on Thursday, so happy half-birthday, Ben, daddy loves you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. To get back to the DTE issue, we had a conversation at a mayor's dinner a few months ago, remember? And they were kinda giving us rough ideas, throwing some numbers around, it would maybe cost about five thousand dollars per resident to bury the lines in our neighborhoods, and I said to them, why don't we do that? They said, well, would it be, that'd just be too much for us to handle. And I'm thinking to myself, well, how can that be too much to handle when every time the power goes out, we have crews coming from other states, and the expense of having all the overtime and the crews out there to handle a power outage, and alone, the loss of revenue for them and the outages for the residences that are having to deal with some way or somehow to stay warm or keep things going at the time? And it just seems like an excuse after excuse, and again, what the Councilman Londo said was true. What was that number again? For the, uh, commission?
Um, yeah, reach out to the Michigan Public Service Commission.
Public Service Commission. Go online.
Call your legislator.
Make a complaint, make your voice heard, because nothing's gonna change unless somebody pushes them to change. The Public Service Commission seems to be, for many decades and longer, has been in the politicians' hip pocket along with the DTE and consumers, they've all been there. They all play on each other and help each other and say, so, okay, we'll take care of this if you do take care of that. of this if you do take care of that." And then maybe it's high time that they just get a rude awakening and get their shit together. But I'd like to say thank you for coming out. We had a philosophical debate and discussion about the marijuana and also about having a nice community event in our south end of town. And hopefully, it takes off and is a very well-received and respected event, and things work out to the best for us, that we hope it is. And we're hoping to get plenty of feedback after that.
We have the number.
Yeah, the number.
To reach out to the Michigan Public Service Commission, please dial 1-800-292-9555 or 517-284-8100. You can also post feedback to them directly from their webpage. They will be holding hearings throughout the state because they're currently seeking a rate increase because they're the worst people in the world. And then you can also reach out to your elected officials, who will be holding hearings in Lansing.
So get ahold of them. And like I said, I think the event we're having here will be positive, and we're hoping that everything works out for the best. And again, the state's going to try to do something else. They want to toll road us. It was on the news, they want to have toll roads on our freeways. Okay, well, we'll toll road here, we'll toll road there. I mean, we already pay, why don't you just put another nickel on the gas tax and pay for it, get it over with? Why have us all be inconvenienced, you know how hard it is to get around town now when the traffic jams are going on? Another thing, make your voice heard. Tell them to stop their garbage up there and actually focus on what the needs of the people are, not just shoring up at a bank account so they can take the money and use it wherever they want, instead of fixing the roads like they should have been fixing all along, instead of wasting the government money that they get from the feds and federal free grants. I'm sorry, going on my bandwagon. But anyways, have a good night. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
You mean like the unnecessary widening of John R.